It's a lot of the same things we fight against here in New Brunswick. Police brutality. Fighting against the same people who are out there, you know, starving kids in Iraq and, you know, putting an embargo on Cuba. He's fighting the same system. So, anyone who wants to get involved, he's like to bring things to make the town much more in touch with the people, improve education, all that. Raz is standing up and we're gonna learn, we're gonna get more educated about what he is and what the campaign stands for. And if anyone is gonna get involved, because to not get involved is national chauvinism, because this is something that's very important that we get out there and we support the campaign. It's something that has international significance and we can all learn a lot from being a part of and we can contribute to something that's one of the most important things going on internationally today. So, if you can go, next Saturday, there's a march, a, what is it called? The family march that's going out. There's, from New Brunswick, we have our own Exit 9 will be there and they'll be playing on a flatbed truck, I believe, and Lauren Hill from the Fugees will be out there supporting Raz. So, everyone who wants to go out there, next Saturday, you can see organizing from New Brunswick, you can see Keith Joseph right here. If you wanna go down, he'll take names, organize, coordinate some kind of rides or something. Also, the campaign day, May 12th. May 12th, the big day, mark your calendars, be there. We need people to be in Newark campaigning for Raz, May 12th, big campaign. So, again, see, you can see, if you're in New Brunswick, you can see Keith and, you know, we'll work on getting everyone down there, up there. Okay? And without taking any more of our time, we'd like to introduce Raz Baraka, member of the Black Lives Matter. His CD is on sale, he's got a new CD out, Shorty for Mayor, make sure to pick it up. It's fifteen bucks, right?
I paid thirteen.
Twelve dollars today.
Twelve dollars today, special. Okay, you can get it from where?
From me.
For me. Just come up, introduce him in the mailroom.
It's a store in New Brunswick, I don't know the name of it. Two four seven? Is that where it is? Two four seven?
I said two four seven, in New Brunswick. And, if you don't have any here?
Yeah, I have some here today.
And there's some here today, so you can pick it up, I guess, when he's done. All right? Raz Baraka.
You don't mind if I take off this jacket? I've been in there all day. I ran down here from a debate, so that's why I was late, I'm sorry if I had you waiting. Sitting up there listening to boring politicians all day, lying about what they voted on and they can't remember. Ron Rice, he was running for mayor, he's a councilman now, somebody asked him about something he voted on, he can't remember. Said, "I don't remember if I voted yes or no." It's like shit. Hope your memory's better when you're mayor. But, uh, that's, I mean, that's what we talking about. A lot of people don't understand why we have to run a campaign. Before I get to this poetry, because the poetry and the politics and the campaign and organization is all one thing. It's all one thing, it's, it's, it's not different. People ask me, in the street, my children, I teach, they say, "Mr. B, how you gonna be a teacher, sell a CD and run for political office?" I said, "Actually, I'm just doing the same thing." It's all the same thing, it's just different forms of the same thing we're trying to do, you know? You know, overthrow this thing, take this whole thing down, you know, and build something for the people. It's part of, part of the same thing and it's time for us to make what we believe popular.
That's right.
And, you know, we just have to stop allowing people to isolate us, to make us out to be the crazy folks in the back somewhere, beating each other up, yelling and screaming. We don't know what we want or what people want or, oh, what should be done. We just mad as hell and, you know, that's, that's our problem. You know, ninety fours, bunch of young kids, they just mad, they just, they just mad, that's their problem, you know? Now, the problem is, everybody else in the city, they mad too. They just can't identify with you because the people who have their ear make them believe that you are their enemy instead of their friend. They make them believe that they have more in common with them than they do with you. You might know that that's a lie, you might put up a flyer or have a forum and invite five thousand people and only you and your friends come, or everybody who believes what you believe anyway show up, or they believe halfway what you believe and they're curious, but the cats who you really fighting for, they not coming there. They don't want nothing to do with it, they think you're crazy, you know? But as long as we outside, as long as they can keep us, you know, like Ed said, in the forest yelling, as long as they can do that, they'll always win. And I said at my house on Friday that a political science professor, Ron Walters, told me, you know, the, the important thing that they do is keep us out of the conversation. And as long as we're out of the conversation, nobody even knows what we're talking about. They don't even know what you're saying. And if something happens to you, God knows, nobody even know who you are, or, or, or they won't even be for you. That's why we got so many political prisoners in this, in these jails in America now, and nobody even know who they were, what they were about, what they fought for. There's a few of us who, who know about revolution, who know the struggle that took place in this country, because they don't teach people's history in school and we have to teach it. And if I get on a ballot, it means that they have to invite me to the debate. And it means that at the debate, I can say, "We need a civilian police review board." And I can force the people there to say, "You know, he's right, we need a review board." And I can force the people there to ask the other politicians, "Why the hell don't we have a review board? If you agree with a review board, why we don't have a review board?" I can raise the Martinez bill locally, I can say, "Everybody needs to be employed." I can say, "Listen, there's seven hundred thousand jobs in Newark, only three hundred thousand people live here, how come we have fourteen percent unemployment?" I can say that and people can say, "Shit, that makes sense." And people can begin to organize and join something that's mass, that they can get a part of and fight for their rights every day, every day. Sometimes, you know, we can't see the good that we cause in these streets organizing. It's not just about, you know, flyers and our meetings and our personal, you know, what we think and what we feel ideologically, we don't wanna go here, we don't wanna go there. You should go anywhere where the people are, you should be there. Wherever the people are, you should be there. Trying to get them out of there or trying to organize them, whatever it is that, where they are, you have to go. You have to go there, because you can't go have a thing somewhere and expect people to come to you because you're right. Who gives a fuck if you're right? I mean, I, I can say I'm right until I blew in the face and people will say, "You're wrong." I can believe something a million times and, and prove it historically and prove it through everything I read and some mother on the street with a kid will say, "Fuck you, get out of here, you don't know what you're talking about." And I have to get on my knees and explain to her why what I believe is the right thing to believe and why you should agree with what I'm doing and fight the same fight I'm fighting. Other than that, other than that, when they get in trouble, they call the police, they don't call us. First thing is called body snatchers. They always telling you to sleep, just close your eyes. You too excited, worked up, calm down, just sleep, sleep. I tell you, don't feel or be emotional, don't scream or worry no more, being sad or crying, just sleep, just rest, don't think too hard or read too much, that's your problem, you care about everything, just ignore it, let it go, relax your mind, just sleep. I tell you, just sleep while they creep into your pores and invade your smells, kidnap you in your sleep while you're sleeping, don't think or be smart or be intelligent or read books, just sleep, don't think, just sleep, don't think, just sleeping, sleeping, no screaming or yelling, but sleeping is okay, naps all the time, sometimes, every day, just sleep, keep your eyes closed, just go to sleep, don't think or breathe or be smart or talk or converse or organize, just sleep, just sleep, but not me. Not me, I want welfare and a job, much shit as they owe me, shit. Freedom ain't never been free, freedom ain't never been free, I want welfare and a job, most shit as they owe me. Freedom ain't never been free, freedom ain't never been free, just run, just run. Just run out into the streets and scream and yell, stop traffic, warn everyone, stand up in the middle of the street and stand up in the middle of your class and get on the desk and scream out loud, they're trying to get us all, run in the city hall, drag out all the imposters, have forums in the middle of the sidewalk, run through department stores, knock everything off the shelves, write letters in no form at all, curse wildly, say what you really mean always, draw shit about 'em, sing on their grave, dance on their grave, spray paint revolutionary slogans, cook food that make people live long, sing sad songs, love balance, hell hug right in the middle of the social security line, just don't give up, just don't give up, shit. Freedom ain't never been free, freedom ain't never been free, ask Nat Turner or Sojourner Truth, freedom ain't never been free, ask Tucson Loachor, freedom ain't never been free, I want welfare and a job, most shit as they owe me. Hold impromptu theaters in parking lots, renovate and move into abandoned buildings, turn them into healthcare centers or daycare centers, go into hospitals, turn them into free healthcare centers, demand free healthcare, go into the hospital and demand free healthcare or shit, just don't pay. Go into the library, read everything you can, go into the universities on the campuses, take classes for free, write plays and movies and rap songs, fight, I tell you, fight, I tell you, fight, I tell you, fight, 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 do anything, just don't go to sleep. That's, uh, fun to councilmen as well. I just wanna read that poem in the council chamber. And see what happens. It's a test. Before they get the police. This one's called "No One's Safe." I know who think the author. There was a story of a man who helped people as a boy, who fed the hungry bread from the palm of his hand, who clothed the naked from the sheets on his back, who walked the earth as the embodiment of good, they killed him too. Come to a gunfight with a knife, too much stress and strife. You think this game is fun, but you gotta pay with your life. They'll make you suck your own blood till you choke, say fuck your hope, leave you dead in a cell with a suicide note. It ain't no joke out here, just fear. They got my little brother, they got my little brother on lock, 'cause my family won't stop exposing the lies and injustices and cries of millions and millions of prisons in the unjust system, chasing dreams and fairy tale themes and while they steal all that's real, making deals to kill even your last meal, they got shit for everyone in all kinds of degrees. Their job is to make your progress freeze, please. Everywhere I look is people on their knees, even your rebellion is dead, even your rebellion is dead, they bring death to your bed, the shit you doing, might as well put a gun in your head. Me, I'm red, heard what I said? Me, I'm red, heard what I said? Only revolution gonna bring us bread. Two tried to get over, robbed the corner store, they was fucked from the door, now they both doing a twenty to life bid on some shit neither one of them did. Now that east coast, west coast stuff? That east coast, west coast stuff, that stuff is ass. Let me find the police. Now that east coast, west coast, that stuff is ass, 'cause when it comes to this game, we all play last. And if they can kill their own president, what's gonna save your black ass? They make you disappear quick and fast. No one's safe in this place, the belly of the beast, workers give their life just so bankers can eat. They send their kids to college while you're stealing cars doing donuts in the street. They got you hooked on their life, your own history you don't wanna hear, talking some real slick shit, but you ain't even watching your rear, just happy to be here. Make you a star, parade you on TV with diamonds, furs and fancy cars, but to the people, that shit too far, gotta kill each other trying to get where you are. Now you got five TVs in one room in a house you don't even live in, got money that you can't spend, make your enemies richer and won't even talk to your friends. Now this ain't no player hater shit or lip from a joker who just wanna be down, 'cause I go by that old saying, "What goes up surely comes down." I just want you to choose side and make sure you choose right, 'cause when the time comes, it's gonna be a long ass night. I'd rather all have a little better, I'd rather all have a little better than a little better have a lot. I'd rather all have a little better than a little have a lot. We'll all get some than some having all we got. Instead, we got fifty brothers standing on the same bus stop, talking about their power, but don't even know who collecting the garbage on their block. And don't let the shit get hot, when the pigs come around, everybody turn to cops. I just wanna know when all this gonna stop. It's time for us to build. I mean, we gotta build a union, a party, some shit we all can join and be down, organize our neighborhoods, our barrios and turn this whole motherfucking thing upside down. I wanna do a poem for one of my students, Penney Frazier, who was killed in Newark and shot by another kid and Yaz, Yaz Minion is on that one, on the CD, it's called... I must've went to a hundred funerals last summer. Every time I think I got a few steps on 'em, blam, right back down where I started. Shot through holes in a fence, blood colored all over the hopscotch board. Straight bullets ricocheting off windowsills, dead in their prime. Seems the only constant things around here are crowded funerals and gossip, anger and death in the wind. They say what goes around comes around, that you're gonna pay for all you do and the only free things in this world are hard times and bubble gum. Not even the gum costs a quarter and the only sure things are chest pains and tears. Depression sits in the air above the ghetto like a hot July. I wonder when all the crying and praying are gonna pay off or when Jesus gonna make it to Newark to question our sins? Or when the meat will inherit the earth? They had no business taking you, Q, full of smiles and courage, trying hard to stay alive on a street that welcomes dead babies with open arms? It's your courage the world fears, your walk meant resistance, it's your smiles they hate, the way people loved you. I remember seeing you in my class, filling yourself up, "Mr. B, Mr. B, they don't even know what the volume of a pyramid is, Mr. B." I don't even believe in my own dreams anymore. My heart has overflowed with sorrow and I couldn't even cry. I couldn't even cry when they first told me in the middle of the night, "Mr. B, yo, B, you heard what happened to your boy, Q quit and he dead." Dead? Q? Dead? Nah, Q can't be dead, he just be gone, gone away from here. And at the funeral, I couldn't hold it back anymore, rushed over, it just rushed over like rain in the reservoir. I just kept seeing your face, I just kept seeing it over and over when we went to the movies or when I saw you smile. And I realized, it is the fear, the fear to say I love you or actually do it that has kept us from saving each other. And I failed to protect you and my tears can't bring you back, so I'ma just have to say peace. Peace, Q, stay strong. See you soon. called Prophecy and Yaz is singing some background vocals on that. Again, Yaz Minion, I did Bullis, he's wonderful singer, right? It's the one I get all the slack for, the prophecies. I danced with the devil last night. I danced with the devil last night on a barren road next to the main avenue, full of dying children and burnt buildings. I danced with the devil last night and even he had no way out. Whispering of robber barons of war and pestilence and plague, of humans lying on their backs while their tongues scrape the concrete. I danced with the devil last night. Have you ever seen an angel before? Not in a dream or a folk tale, some legend, but up close, up close, shove a gun in your mouth with your livelihood in the palm of his hand, silencing, silencing, silencing babies before they breathe, silencing babies before they breathe, starving millions and destroying villages, burning books and creating chaos. There is a battle in heaven, there is a battle in heaven, the owner against his henchmen and the people must pay for it. Have you ever seen an angel before? It's terrifying. That's why children sleep with their lights on and hide beneath their covers, 'cause there's evil, 'cause evil lurks under their beds and something strange is in the closet because we can't see or say what it really is, failing to protect our babies from them so we just lie. We lie, we lie with the lights out in the dark while the world punishes them over a war, a war they didn't even start, over the muscle in their brain, over the muscles in their arms, about their very souls, about their very souls. They say the devil likes souls, the devil likes souls, the devil likes souls. And we teach them lies, we teach them lies and make them afraid and confused until their own guns are pointed at them own selves, until their own guns are pointed at them own selves, cursed to walk around in hell on barren streets with the devil. And heaven is being run by Nazis, so we aren't allowed, heaven is being run by Nazis, no niggas in heaven, that's why they both must go, that's why they both must go, because all they have to offer is curfews, death penalties and folk tales, so our children can forget about the evil under their bed and live on their knees like the rest of us, so they won't join the ranks of the rebels, so they won't join the ranks of the rebels, those who have fought with the devil and seen the angels up close. Those who have fought with the devil and seen the angels up close, so we can live in a world that our babies can be born in and sleep in peace. Two more poems, I see, two more, two more. One for Mumia. I'ma read the Mumia piece. And another poem called Prayer for the Eighty-Five. I have an excerpt of this poem on an album too, Bible Mumia Must Live and Go Free. Sunlight fire. Tomorrow's not promised yet. You know, most people don't wanna be the king, most people, most people in their right mind don't wanna be the king, most people, most people, most people, most people don't wanna be the king, most people don't wanna be the king, most people don't wanna be the king or the queen for that matter. People want freedom, people, 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 people in their right mind want freedom, people want freedom, people want freedom like Sojourner, bare chested on congressional floors yelling, "Ain't I a woman, ain't I a woman?" Freedom like ten thousand black faces in blue suits sweeping across southern plantations or freedom like a solder busting down prison walls, most people don't wanna be the king, most people don't wanna be the king, most people don't wanna be the king or the queen for that matter. People just don't wanna beg or accept handouts or steal, most people want freedom, they want freedom in a very real way, something that's just better than what they have or don't have, a scratch, a pull, a push, a fight, proof that everything and everyone's not dead. Most people just don't want poverty or dead children on dirty sidewalks or diseases and plagues or high insurance and no healthcare. They don't wanna work for little or no pay, they just want their jobs back and a decent education for their children and a playground to play in, who can't understand factories that lay off millions, that throw away extra food and burn surplus while families live in boxes or cold streets or shacks in South Carolina. While some have acres of unused land, abandoned buildings, yachts, diamonds and riches while most of the world is starving, while most of the world is starving and on their knees praying to a god who has turned a deaf year. Yeah, there are places where the rats are millionaires and people scrape through the roughage of back alley Chinese joints, dirty laundry in the country. Can't trust Uncle Sam. They are people who actually want war and jail and death penalties. They are people who would party around Mumia's electrocuted corpse, who would love to turn our mothers into breeders, take babies from their families from seventeen ninety-five to eighteen ninety-five to nineteen ninety-five for money, for riches, for profit, for capital. There are refugees all over the world in concentration camps, stinking with death and unborn babies and barbed wire, clothes in boxes, eating wheat and water with broded bellies in every place you can think of, on every continent, every language you can utter. A thousand colors of suffering and stagnation, staring in the dead face of imperialism in every corner of the earth, chased away by inhumanity, ran out of their homes, away from their families, attacked in front of un-American comedians, 'cause they didn't believe the earth was flat or people should starve or be beaten and repressed, because they wanted workers to enjoy their lives and receive rate of pay. They believed that the people should run the world and benefit from their own labor, that is why they died, they believed in democracy, that is why Sacco and Vancetti is dead, Wassek Q is dead and the Rosenbergs are dead, while the Whalers are dead, while Malcolm and Lumumba and Nat Turner is dead and while Mumia must live and while Mumia must live and while we all must live, because we have been plagued to keep our mouths shut and our stories to ourselves and hate one another for being who we are, because capitalism has spent billions to watch people's memories away and divide us to kill hope and love from our hearts. That's why Mumia must live, that's why we all must live, that's why revolution must live, not just speeches and marches or protests and jail and guns, it's not just about meetings and flyers, it's about ordinary people's will and their push to live a better life, more fruitful and more importantly, longer. It's about having the ability to enjoy life and not live in misery and despair, so people can get off of their knees and stand up and move forward, something you just don't get in the class. You get it every day, making history, moving from one point to another. It's about crying when you must, shouting when necessary, hugging always, creating a sense of humanity and sustaining democracy. It's about the love of life and the love of people, not of academia or political correctness, but out of very heart of your soul, even science is on our side. It's about loving freedom, it's about loving freedom more than anything else in the world. It's about loving freedom more than anything else in the world. That is why Mumia must live and go free, that is why Mumia must live and go free, that is why Mumia must live and go free, that is why we all must live and be free. All power to the people, free Mumia, Abu Jamal. This last poem is called Prayer for the Eighty-Five. I always say, if you get offended, it's for the person sitting next to you. If there is a God, then how come the devil is in charge? If you follow the history of bones laid, thousands of leagues under the Atlantic, you'd reach a fork in the road, a island, a fortress, where Christians sought gold and black flesh, where they made ritual and worshiped above dirt and semen, shackled to people on top of people on top of people on top of people on top of humans dying in their feces, shark food for God-fearing Anglos. Yeah, if there is a God, then how come the devil is in charge? On sunny Sunday, on sunny Sunday, church mornings, four little dark girls, four little innocent black girls went to school with Bible in hand in the house of the Lord. That day, the devil showed up and, yay, they walked through the valley of the shadow of death. Yay, they walked through the valley of the shadow of death, they feared not, they feared not and their brains slid down. They feared not, they feared not, and their brains slid down the stained glass and their limbs were sprawled all over the pews. Their hearts fell to the floor and in all of their faith, in all of their faith on that Alabama Sunday, the devil still showed up. And did his death march, his be do de, 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 de de de. If God gave his only begotten son, huh, be do de, be do de, be do de. If God gave his only begotten son, huh, you can give up your wallet. If God gave his only begotten son, you can give up your home, your social security, your new car, be do de. If God gave his only begotten son, you can give up your life, your life nigga, your life. Who is this God and where is he? Let him show himself, can he hear the screams? The screams of mothers on their knees bowing in puddles of blood in the middle of the street, screaming for apparitions of children shot in the head by stray bullets? Oh my God, oh my God, there are people all over the world, prostrating in their bedroom, begging for you to help them feed their family, pay their rent, keep their jobs, hold their lives together, protect them from evil. And in all of this, I wonder what did we do anyway? What mistake that we made? Those who worshipped you for millions of years in our names and style and our dance, our song, our word and our deed while tree choppers and murderers, people who gave out smallpox and blankets, gave diseases in Tuskegee, slaughtered millions, robbed the poor, made children work in factories? Had fruitful lives in dominion over ours. I say where is our God coming around a corner with a three-piece suit, an afro, a funky hat and a M16 hanging from his... ...vast aircraft with missiles that explode over military bases around the world in preparation to kill women, children, to monopolize their grain and export their livelihood? We want him to sneak out of dark alleyways and drive daggers through the scars of all the policemen that have watched too much Hill Street Blues. He should make Rockefeller, DuPont, Gerald V Center, super rich, catch a flat tire in the South Bronx on a day when the shit hits the fan. He should cause the stock market to crash. He should overpay workers, he should chase imperialists from their homes. He should allow homeless people to sleep in their living rooms and raid their refrigerators. He should redistribute their clothing. He should parachute out of helicopters and round up all fascists and drag them through the streets. He should really park the Red Sea and drown Pharaoh's army. He should expose them before the world. He should tell the truth, he should tell the truth, he should tell the truth in the people's name. Amen, amen, amen. Thank you. On Saturday, the eighteenth, we have in the March, I know my brother will kill me if I don't make these announcements. We have a March, April eighteenth, in Newark, marching around most of the city. And, you know, we're just trying to turn it up because they're trying to keep the campaign quiet, they want to keep this a quiet thing, so we're just trying to turn it up. You know, make noise, raise the level, break people out of the street. You know, that's what we, that's what we're gonna do on the eighteenth, on May twelfth. We need as many people as we can get, you know, we just... To man the polls so they don't steal in the morning, you know, seven o'clock it'll be a thousand votes on the poll before people even wake up. I mean, you know, they got dead folks that vote. There's all kind of stuff that takes place that we have to combat. We gotta get people out to vote, make sure they get to the polls, make sure our people are protected once they're at the polls. There's a lot of stuff we have to do and we definitely need support and we need all the help that we can get. I think that, you know, we got a chance to make a victory in the state of New Jersey for our side, you know, we could chalk it up for our side if we, if we get this victory. And I think that they know that, that we are potential victors, so they're not even coming at us the same way. You know, in ninety-four, they came at us in a whole different way. They came at us like you're too young, you're wild, you're loud, you know, you have rallies in the street, what the hell is this, this is not, you know, they, they came at us that way. Look at this guy, he's twenty-four, he doesn't know what he's talking about, he got a bunch of kids around him, they're just screaming and hollering, give a couple of them a job, they'll be quiet. That's how they came at us in twenty-four, in ninety-four, ninety-eight. They know we got a chance, they know we got a good chance, that people are listening to us, people are talking to us, we're raising the level, so they're trying a whole different thing, you know, they come, they, they take, they wanna take us to court, we got cops stripping down our posters, you know, they, they, they're gonna come at us in a whole different way, which is, I believe is more terror. And once we get down to the last days, we'll see, you know, the, it's, see a rear's ugly head and it will come out and we need as much help as we can get. They know that, you know, that I go around and I talk about the lady from Seth Boyden who can't wash her clothes or, I go everywhere I go, I talk about everything, the rats in people's apartments and they throwing people out, they don't pay rent, you know, they say the rent is too, too little, they should be paying it, but they living with rats, I mean, you should pay people to live there. I mean, there's no rea, you know, there's no reason people should be paying you to live in hell, you know, you ought to pay them. I mean, we shouldn't even be living like this in the first place, but that's the, the whole dichotomy we, we bringing out, the whole dialectic we raising, you know, that's as a revolutionary, what are you supposed to do but shine light on the contradictions? If you can't expose the contradictions, then what good are you? You know, that's what you have to do, expose the contradictions where they are, especially the ones that are the most antagonistic, you know what I'm saying? Cause we think that people should see it just like us. They might see it, but they might not think they can win. They might not think that, that we have the right organization, they might think you're crazy or you're nuts, you know? They might be opposed to police brutality, but the dialectic of that is, they'll call the police when they get in trouble. They'll, you know, that's, that's the bottom line and, and, and that's problems that we have to deal with in this, in, in here, where we are. That, that's the bottom line. They, they can't, when, when something's wrong in their building, they don't call you, they call downtown. The landlord don't do what he's supposed to do, they call rent control. You know, when stuff's supposed to happen that they don't get their garbage picked up, they call those people. They don't get any progress, but they gotta keep calling them because nothing else is in existence yet. They gotta keep calling them and as long as they believe in, in, in the steps that they have to take in this system, they're always gonna believe in it and it's always gonna remain. It's always gonna remain and you have to take people through those steps. That's what we doing, we taking people through the steps. We taking them through the steps, so we want you to come help us.
I think we should give another hand to Raz and Yaz for coming down all the way down from Newark on a Monday night. You know, a lot of people here are from New Brunswick and, uh, so you, you kinda don't know about Newark, you don't know what it is, you know, that there's like a new performing arts center there. Whenever I go up to Newark, I go up to Newark quite frequently and people are like, oh my God, your car's gonna get stolen. Like people who live in Newark don't own cars or, or your car never gets stolen in New Brunswick or anywhere else. So, you know, to, to challenge those ideas and to actually educate yourself, definitely take advantage of people going down there on the eighteenth, definitely participate in this campaign. I am gonna donate every single cent I made tonight in tips to the campaign. Maybe, you know, people can cough up some more money and pass it around. This is awesome work that these people are doing, it's amazing. And like Carrie mentioned before, I'm the promoter of the New World Rhythm Series. Every week, we have something different. Some nights we have Kathy McCordy, she's over there, she's an incredible vocalist. Some nights we have Barbara Horn, she put together an awesome event. Last time we had Women in Hip-Hop. I wanna say something, this is the only bar where underage people are allowed in here. Don't come to my bar and buy your friends drinks if they're underage because the city is gonna, you know, as, as much noise as we make, the city's gonna look for a reason to shut it down. So don't, don't put that on me, you know, go get drunk before or go somewhere else if you need to drink, but don't come here and, uh, and jeopardize what we got going on here because a lot of people put a lot of work into it. So, uh, I'll give thanks to Carrie, thanks again to Raz and everybody from the campaign, everybody from Newark and everybody from New York, thank you.
Thanks Tracy for organizing this event every week. Let's hear it one more time for Raz and Yaz. Again, you can buy the CD here from Raz, he has a special tonight for twelve bucks. You can buy the CD, it has a lot of the verse he was, he was reading for you tonight and more, so check it out, it's right up here, twelve bucks. And this Saturday, this Saturday morning, everyone can go down and be part of the campaign, you can be part of what Raz has been talking about all night, you know, you know more about it, you've been educated a little more, so we can be a part of it and it's very important because he's fighting, you know, he's fighting against imperialism, he's fighting the good fight and that's what, you know, it's, it's fighting against national chauvinism, fighting against imperialism, so let's get involved and head up there to Newark this Saturday. Again, there's also Lauren Hill from the Fujis will be there supporting the Raz campaign and Ed Zinn from New Brunswick, so it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a great day. Now this Sa, this Friday, Amir Baraka, Raz's father, will be talking, will be speaking in, uh, at the Bush Student Center on self-taught African-American art of the South. It's a free event, the RCPC is sponsoring it on visual arts. So that is at seven thirty at the Bush Campus Center, so everyone be there Friday night. And we have a few more announcements to make. We're gonna pass a hat for the campaign, for the campaign, so we've got a hat going around and we've got some announcements. Christina? Christina?
Hi. This Sunday, after the great hiatus we had after the Women's History Month event on the twenty-third, we're going to restart the weekly meetings for Sisterhood and Struggle, which is the women's zine that's, hopefully y'all know about, but, uh, so just so every person in the room knows that they, we will be meeting Sunday, six P M. at the Women's Supporting Resource Center, which is Seventeenth Senior Street, right around the corner from the College Avenue Student Center. And I wanna stress that everybody is welcome to come and everybody's welcome to contribute to the zine too. And yeah, so Sunday, six o'clock.
So it's a packed week, everyone, this Friday, Bush Student Center, seven thirty, Amir Baraka and inspiring, just like Raz, what? Take Back the Night, this Thursday night. Everyone should know what Take Back the Night, Take Back the Night is. Got, got an announcement from New York? Okay, I guess that's it. One more, let's give another round of applause for Raz for coming, coming down from Newark. Thanks Raz. And I hope to see everyone Saturday. You can arrange a ride with Keith, Saturday and May twelfth, day of the election. Good night.
Humanity, then we tell the truth. We must always tell the truth. Expressing ourselves as human beings for the sake of humanity, then we tell the truth. Our art, like our humanity, must be something that lives, that is alive, not merely for display, but something that changes things. Our writing becomes a force for beauty and reality, a force opposing ignorance and oppression. Our life and art either supports the status quo or challenges it. If we tell the truth, then we are challenging the evil, dead part of what is. Our art must be for life's sake. Art for art's sake, that always was and is at best a silly notion for everything, especially art is rooted in life experience, cultural and social context. Reality, our art must recognize and reflect this as essential to the thought and feeling that inform it and in its expression. Our art is rooted in motion that contains pain and struggle, triumph and celebration and endurance. Our art is nurtured in a context with personal and social expansive and singular. We must go deep, deep enough to understand the need for things that touch the collective consciousness and expression that acknowledges the fundamental relevance of differences in racial, ethnic and cultural experience. Our art must contain ideas and things that include economics, politics and class, realities which are almost always completely separate from even the idea of art, by the art for art's sake. Those who say, uh, this is art, you can tell it because it's dead or incomprehensible, you know, this must be deep because I can't understand a damn thing about it. The trick of associating profundity with that which cannot be understood and is not meant to be understood. Or this is art because it is totally unrelated to any earthly life experience or simply provides an excuse for some to engage in self-indulgent acting out of diverse tendencies and sundry angst-drenched pseudo-passions. Now, now, nothing real here, no life, this is art, nothing real, the real is too unnerving, too threatening to the art for art's sake. Academic riddim words, cultural supremacists and like-minded knuckleheads. When these people object to mixing politics and art, they lie, and most of them and their ideological ancestors have been mixing politics and art for centuries. Their real complaint is when the ideology being raised subverts and threatens their economic and social power and self-anointed, self-perceived cultural supremacy. It is to counter this that we make our art a human thing, art for life's sake, a thing to challenge, a sickness and nightmare which threatens us all one way or another, to keep it at bay and combat it through creative expression. We break the constraints of old notions that are irrelevant to our lives. Our art is life and all things are subject to the heat of our creativity, especially the social context because it is so real and inescapable. The artists we are, we be, we must encourage and develop are about humanity and human things. We must express and use the contradictions in our lives, deal with joy and celebration, ambiguity and challenge, the real world, context and history, keep the blood pushing strong, make art and cultural expression move and transform and embrace and change what needs to be changed, support life, oppose ignorance and oppression, clearly and scientifically analyze the conditions of our lives, creatively and passionately express ourselves, make our writing, our art laser-like in its intensity, nuclear hot, but not like the bombs made by the barbarians of war and capitalism, no, nuclear hot like the stars, the torches of nature whose heat and light give all things life, not death. Life, we, our lives, our art must be like that, we must share that, act upon that, be like that forever. Thank you. How did you get that? Well, it doesn't matter, the way things are going, it doesn't matter at all. You don't seem to understand the nature of the situation. We are in control, yet you just don't seem to understand. We have the floor plans and the programs, the screenplays and the bylines, the parts and the tools, the vehicles and the schedules, the games and the makeup, we have the keyboards and the beer, we have the market and the magic, we have the discs and the pages, the video and the radio, the switch and the gears, we have the promotion and the production, the laws and the loopholes. We have the beauty and the beast, the mix and the mindset, we have your mind, we have your mind. And in the long run, we will kill you and your friends too. We will deny you and beat you and transform you and ignore you and deceive you, we will bring you to tears and your children will choke on the pain we make. Yet you just don't seem to understand, just don't seem to understand. And you take this back to where you got it and leave me alone, I have, I have work to do. And you, you have nothing to do, do you? It's okay, relax, everything will be fine. Everything will be fine. You understand, don't you? That poem is called Kill.
Yes, sir.
Interesting time, do a piece here, there's a piece that I did, real disdainful, I'm having included him in defense of Mumia. I probably don't have to state anything about this book to people here, but if you don't have this book, please get it, don't steal it, buy it, pay for it, some money goes for Mumia's defense. This piece is called Domestic Policy. I'm not crazy about it, but I'm going to clean your house. Yeah, your house affects me. It could take some time. There's water in your basement, roaches in your walls, mice in your attic. There's smoke and stale and moldy things in your kitchen, your living room is dead, your windows don't work, your appliances are irrelevant, the air is sour. There's confusion in your bedroom, your sheets are embarrassing, there's blood in your toilet, something wet on the floor, I almost slipped on it. There are small rusty coins in the furniture and moistness, dollar bills stuck in the mirrors. This is a nasty house. But I'll clean it. I'll clean it. I may have to crush the walls and rip off the roof to get it right. I may need to call upon the whirlwind and the flame because some things, some things cannot be washed away, some things must burn. But I'll clean this house. But I'll clean this house. You, you must clean yourself. Thank you. Now, this piece is called "Taking Signs." It begins with two undergraths. Quote, "I believe it's a crime for anyone who is being brutalized to continue to accept that brutality without doing something to defend themselves." End quote. El Hajj Malik Al Shabazz. Quote, "When we read the history books, give it to children in the United States, it all starts with heroic adventure, there's no bloodshed. And Columbus Day is a celebration." End quote. Howard Zinn, A People's History of the United States. Celebrate? Celebrate what? Ignorance, deceit, conquest, slavery, death. No. That's what you're about. I know, we know what you're about. I believe nothing you say. Tell me it's daytime, I will find a window and look for the sun. Something even you cannot touch. And then I'll make sure I can feel the natural heat. I know what you're about. I know you lie. I know how crude and how sophisticated you can be, the masks you wear for one face. One face. Depression, exploitation, accumulation, death. And you lie so well, so cleverly, so consistently. You live to make the truth a ghost, a shadow, a commodity for your manipulation. But the truth is not for sale. The truth is not a shadow or a ghost. So don't tell me about Columbus Day. Don't tell me about human progress through discovery. Tell me about the accumulation of wealth through conquest. Tell me about the rise of capitalism. Don't tell me about Cortez, Jamestown, Puritans, Thanksgiving. Tell me about the Taín, the Arawak, the Pequod. Tell me about conquest and blood. Don't tell me fairy tale history. Tell me about encomendas, concentration camps for Native Americans. Tell me about the starving time when the English lived up their own dead to eat. Don't tell me about the revolution, constitution, democracy. Tell me about indentured servants, the relationship with property, the voting. Hey, you cannot vote unless you owned something. You cannot vote unless you owned something. Tell me about slavery. Brown ships on blue water, a path of bones across the sea. A slave ship, captain wrote the hymn "Amazing Grace." How sweet, the name of Jesus on one of his business trips. Tell me about religion, one nation under God. Tell me about a nation where racism was cultivated and refined into a madness more ingrained in psyche and economics than anywhere, anytime.
That's right.
Don't tell me about founding fathers, ancestor worship disguised as history. Don't tell me about manifest destiny. Tell me about the Cherokee, the Trail of Tears. Tell me about genocide. Don't tell me about the Civil War. Tell me about resistance and revolt. Prosser, B.C., Tugman, Walker, Tru, Brown. Tell me about the economics of secession, the draft riots, the copper hits. Tell me about Frederick Douglass, the limits of tyrants are prescribed only by the endurance of those whom they would oppress.
That's right.
Only by the endurance of those whom they would oppress. Don't tell me about the rise of industrialism. Tell me about young women dying in low textile mills, the Chinese laying train tracks, the iron horse running up their backs. Tell me about the robber barons, one of whom bragged, "I can hire half the working class to kill the other half." Yeah, tell me about the crew box home. Don't tell me about the Gil of the Age. Tell me about Haymarket Square, U.S. colonialism, Cuban, the Philippines, Southern Italian immigrants, steerage slime. Don't tell me about World War I. Tell me about American socialists, the massacre of workers in Montana, Joe Hill, Sacco and Benzetti, the Palmer raids, the Red Summer. Don't tell me about the New Deal. Tell me about the Depression, the whole story, the Wobblies, the Veterans Bonus Armory. Don't tell me about World War II. Tell me about the roots of war, pacifists, Nisei, U.S.-owned companies, and Jew exterminating Nazi Germany, labor strikes, the Red Cross segregating blood by race. Don't tell me about the American century. Tell me about post-war American empire, economic colonialism in Latin America. Tell me about June Crowe, the Rosenbergs, McCarthy, the CIA in Greece, Italy, Iran, Guatemala. Tell me about Hoover's FBI, a microphone under every bed except his. Tell me about recessions, urban disinvestment, planned obsolescence, the oil industry, Palestine, U.S. military experiments on U.S. citizens, Justicede assassinations, foreign and domestic Lumumba, Vietnam, Kent State, Jackson State, Comantel Pro, Watergate, Allende, Angola, South Africa, Union busting, the flight of capital, which with America don't mean shit, monopoly capitalism.
That's right.
Government scandals, SNL bailouts, corporate welfare, U.S.-sponsored terrorism, Contra gates, supply side triple-down food to economics, trumped-up raiding sweeps, Persian Gulf video war, Iraq gate, the downsizing, democracy pandering to fear and ignorance, subversion of democracy by sleepy actors, tin soldiers, stuttering preppy's, buttoned-out buggers and the newt men. Don't tell me about history unless you tell the truth.
That's right.
The whole truth. Don't tell us these things, your version of history, as if we have something in common with you, as if there's a singular national interest, as if there will not be inevitably a taking of signs here. You cannot and never could tell us anything. Your apologists cannot because they are either ignorant or corrupt. But you know it, you know the truth. Even if you will not say it because it is the truth and we know that you lie to stay alive. So, so know this. We will never stop fighting you, never. And when the day comes, we will dance on your graves or maybe throw your ashes out into space where they might fall into that sun even you cannot touch. A fire perhaps hot enough to burn your evil out of existence. We will never stop fighting you and exposing you, confronting you one way or another. Not until your memory is something a tale we tell our children about a time when insane people ruled the earth who lived to conquer and slay and ain't kill for insane things like profit and privilege. No, we'll never stop, never. You cannot tell us anything anymore. You cannot tell me anything anymore. You cannot tell me anything anymore. I'm in the paddle city. There's blood on all the engines. There are nightmares in all the sleep. I feel your evil inside of me and I kill it at least once a day. Now you have nothing to say to me. You cannot tell me anything anymore. Quote, "You'll get freedom by letting your enemy know that you'll do anything to get your freedom. Then you'll get it. It's the only way you'll get it. When you stay radical long enough and get enough people to be like you, you'll get your freedom." End quote. El Hajj Malik Al Shabazz. Quote, "All subject peoples are filled with hope by the prospect that an era of right and justice is opening for them in the struggle of civilization against barbarism." End quote. Ho Chi Minh.
Yeah.
Thank you. This piece is untitled. What is this? What is this anger inside? Sometimes I can't even see my hands. I can't feel my heart. I can't hear the blue wave, I can't smell the red sun, I can't taste the green stone. Sometimes it gets that far. And I must remember and remind myself, the anger comes from loving, not hate. From loving, being a human being, loving humanity. The anger comes from struggling with dry ignorance, savages of supremacy and capital, the uncivilized. I would prefer to see my hands and hear the blue wave and smell the red sun and taste the green stone and feel my heart all the time. But I can't, not yet. Thank you.
What a great show. Rich, you came together. You are. Paul Robinson said, "I label myself violently anti-fascist."
That's right.
And we appreciate Rich raising it up like that, clarifying and making it real sharp for those of y'all who are struggling for clarity on that question. All right? Uh, Whistler's under, you ready? How you introduce somebody activist? What's that, what's that old cliche, the poet's key cliches? Somebody don't get go with your direction. So I'm trying to introduce her anyway. But real beautiful sister, real beautiful spirit. Fine culture worker and activist, been on for a long time, for a lot of us for a long time. And, uh, we just grateful to have her here tonight and help us raise it up, the spirit of this ancestor, the spirit of this resistance that we must contain and continue to build and escalate. So with that then, we cut to the chase and give you none other than your sister-in-law, Susana Cabanas.
Invocación. Por el camino, road. De la verdad, truth. Podrá salvarse, save. La humanidad, humanity. Mano con mano, hands. Todas unidas, united. Buscando juntas, searching for. La libertad, freedom. Hay un grito en mi alma, there is a scream in my soul. Amordazado por palabras, bound by words. Como paz, such as peace, humanismo, humanism. Paciencia, patience, justice, justicia. Resistencia, resistance. Hay un grito en mi alma, confundido por mi condición. There is a scream in my soul, confused by my condition. Como mujer, as a woman. Como madre, as a mother. Como amiga, as a friend. Como amante, as a lover. Hay un pulpo en mis entrañas, there is a fist in my guts que me azota constantemente, beating at me constantly. Insistiendo en su liberación, insisting on its liberation. De mi mente racional, from my rational mind. Revolución. 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 Basically, it's a question of class, of race. Whites exploit whites, although it's people of color they'd slave. Basically, it's a question of love, evolution, como vivir, che? An act of love. Okay, I'm gonna read two pieces. It's called "Kings." I'm angry because I hate to be angry. And because I hate to be angry, I'm angry. Angry makes me smoke too much and drink too much and eat too much or not enough. Binge this and that, saturate yourself in something or the other to forget the fact that I'm angry. I'm angry because I don't like who I am, who I become. When I'm angry, I'm mean and vengeful and vicious and vile and acid and ulcers and high blood pressure and headaches and backaches and aches and aches and aches and my head aches when I think how much I ache when I'm angry and how constipated I get because I'm so angry. I don't want to wake up much less go to bed that's so angry, rage, 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 fear, pain, anger. I'm angry because why can't we all be the same and not some have too much while others not enough of nothing to eat, not enough of a head over our, our house, over our heads, not enough of the pain in our hearts that makes us so angry? So angry because don't tell me that that guy sleeping on a stoop down the stoop from where you live doesn't make you angry? Or forty-dollar real-life trees that smell so good when you go by? A whisper in our minds of a time gone by, a time when the wind smelled of sea or of trees? A clean, clear smell? No more a long time gone, gone by. You need to get out of the city. And how many of us get a chance to get out of the city rolling up our pennies? Those of us who still have any left? You know we are poor in America when you have to count your pennies in America to get high? To forget how angry you can get in America in the land of milk and honey? Brother kills brother for a woman, for a life, for a piece of the land. We shoot each other up, day after day after day. We shoot each other up because we're so angry. We're so angry, we break things, we throw things, we beat, we beat each other up even to those we love. We yell and scream and scream and scream and hurt and cry and cry and rage and scream and cry and want to kill and want to die because we want to kill ourselves most of all because we're so angry. One must get very angry to put on a white robe, white being the color of virtue of grace, and add a white hood covering up the rage from our face and go burn a white cross on somebody's lawn because of their color? Or else to put on a white robe and stand on a white altar covered with the most exquisite white cotton and lace and hold up a gold chalice filled with red blood in which we submerge a white wafer and eat and drink of another's flesh and blood in the name of the Lord, in the name of the Lord. This is my land, says the conqueror, and kills and kills with ease and grace. In the name of the Lord, whose Lord is my Lord, your Lord is my God, your God is your God, my God. Do I believe in God? Do I believe in the Lord? Do the people believe in the Lord? And dukes and earls and princesses and pearls and lords and knights of the round table, around the table of the lord of the round table who rules above all and tells all the knights who sit around the round table what to do, when to jump, where to live. Divine rights of kings. Kings have divine rights and dukes and earls and princesses and pearls and the lord of the land and the supreme commander of the armed forces of all the nations and the people, the masters of people who believe in the Lord. Homeless wanderers, wandering, wandering, wandering. Nomads migrating, roaming, moving, constantly moving, running from the landlord, constantly moving, constantly moving because the landlord owns all the land, constantly moving in the name of the Lord, constantly moving. I'm angry, I'm angry, I'm so angry. Okay, um... Are we done? It has to do with oppression. It has to do with men beating women into oppression. Obedience, blind obedience, total unconditional obedience or else death is the final verdict. In Arabia, name applied by the conqueror to the Middle Eastern part of the world, which is still applies to, to what I'm about to say. They cut off women's clips when they are nine or ten. So they will never forget the pain of becoming a woman. After that, done in cold blood, what could be worse? Bearing a child, beatings from your mate. Nothing would top the pain of them cutting off your clips. To make matters worse, to make you believe that that's the way, the Mohammed way, God's way, handed down in the Quran way, they have the women do it. That's why those who rule don't want women to learn how to read. In what Bible does it say that it's okay to cut off a young girl's clit?
Good question.
To cause such in cold-blooded, extraordinary kind of pain? Too. The people are happy, fools that we be. Master threw us a bone, the real prize he kept locked up in Philadelphia dungeon. Death penalty vowed, except a people's hero, except people don't know it. Déjà vu, I see it again. Jesus Christ like Bible story. The Jews were ruling for the Romans, much like in Israel today. Most of the people I've seen interviewed on TV speak a very perfect New York City English accent, whether it be Queens or Brooklyn or Bronx, actuaited. All the Jews who populated the Grand Concourse or Flatbush fled to Israel's suburbs, modern-day settlers, almost two thousand years gone by and it's still the same. Throw them to the lions will soon be the order of the day for the carnivorous masses that we've yet become again. Dog eat dog, man eat man, man eat all even to his children. Fish eat their children and males of all species eat them too if they're allowed, left unprotected by the mate. It must be fucked up to have to protect your children from your mate. What am I talking about? It happened to me. The Lord knew what she was doing when she sent him three thousand miles away. Would have killed him with a knife just Would have killed him with a knife just like OJ if given the chance. But I prayed and prayed and prayed and prayed and prayed the anger away or else a wicked, oh, unrenewable plume I be. I left him to my ancestors, truth and justice will be. Getting back to reality, a revelation. So as I was saying, see here they have these two people's heroes, Mumia and OJ. One, a journalist, a people's hero, except that they don't know it. Sentenced to death in Philadelphia where that black mayor Goody threw the bomb on his own black community. Versus many blacks caused many deaths and imprisonments of the entire black Africa family up to today. They are still in jail for crimes they did not commit like Mumia up to today. On the other hand, you have OJ. As any woman who's ever been hit by the man she loves and lived to tell it and got away. Getting out alive is the order of the day. OJ, a people's hero, except he's not a people's hero. Look where he lives, look to women now, look where he played with all his millions, did he ever give just one away? On the other hand. On the other hand. People who climb to the top and forget where they came from have a very special help awaiting them. Someday, I pray, I pray, I pray.
Yeah. Y'all give it up for Susana Cabanas. Paul Robeson was not just a stellar practitioner of international human solidarity. Not just an anti-fascist freedom fighter. Not just an organic scholar, Gramsci talked about. Not just an example of class suicide anticipating what they would call the new man and woman. He was also a victim of repression. Straight up, he was a victim of repression, over and covert. And when the overt stuff got buried, it's so embarrassing to these monsters that wanna be in control of your and my lives. They escalated the covert stuff because that human being helped set in motion a black liberation movement. And uncompromising black liberation movement, mass and character. And uh, somebody, I think it was someone, ooh, I think it was a piece of jewelry that you could somebody wants to, wanna understand somebody's fears. That's uh, that's something you gotta deal with. But out of their fears, we came to counterintelligence program. Counterintelligence program to stop one of these singular movements, our movement in general, but also the Black Panther Party. We're proud today to have with us someone who was a part of that movement, someone still strong, someone refusing to be a victim. And is a strong voice and a fine poem, and that is none other than your sister in mine, Sisana Shiba.
My, I'll pardon you. I'm glad to be here. This is the first place that I asked to read when the, when I first came here to New York. And Zayid said yes, and then I had to run and catch a ride that I missed anyway. So I'm always glad to be here. And I wanna dedicate this poem to Paul Robeson and to Alvin de la Red and that I heard and loved to hear read. It's called Cultural Workers. Cultural workers, comrades, I salute you. For your hearts are purple, bruised by oppression, bleeding with love for the people. Making your words the sacred fruit of a love supreme. Cultural workers, poets, artists, dancers, dramatists, musicians, writers, I salute you. For we are warriors in the one struggle for human rights. We wage war against corporate greed. Our objective, the hearts and minds touched by Tommy Hilfiger and D K N Y. Stomped by Nike, Fida and Reebok. Drained of cultural memories by Disney, Turner and G E. Raided by Rupert Murdoch and Time Warner and duped by design by the United States Department of Commerce. Oppression being a commercial reality in self-defense, we demand unity in the land of rugged individual struggles with common depth by involuntary collusion, which makes the victim a contributing member of society. Cultural workers, I salute you. For your contribution to community sanity eases the day-to-day pain without a harmful departure into fantasy. And it seems your only dreams are of a place where we are all free to be exactly who we are. Living lives of our own design dictated by our own needs. Aluta continua on the road of your expression. Chroniclers and archivists who remember to take part in the making of history. For your words being more than just clever conversation are become a weapon that reaches consciousness. Your portraits, photos, sculpture, infantry troops marching across our mental landscapes taking no prisoners. Your dances transcend the limitations of fear, bringing all of us in an instant to dwell for a lifetime in new realizations of bravery. Cultural workers, comrades, I salute you.
Yeah.
And I wanna report that the day after Christine Whitman made her threat over the web, I was pleased to see um, an announcement from Radio Havana that Fidel said even though there's a fifty thousand dollar bounty, it will not be honored in Cuba. He's not sending nobody back.
Oh, right.
And I was listening to V A R the other day and they did a program on um, the show that comes on at nine o'clock. Democracy Now!, they did a program on Paul Robeson and they were talking about his command of language and his
Twenty-five.
His uh, grasp of culture. And this poem was inspired by a real phenomenon, it's called Welcome to America. The women are talking and I am listening in Spanish in El Bronx. They say, they wonder does she speak Spanish? But the question is private, not addressed to me. Fear of embarrassment and anonymous unintelligible correction freezes my tongue. Habla sin miedo, my young lord friend, Chango had told me. But having yet to reach that destination, I am silent as they dance. Dominicana? No. Borriqua? No. Americana? And La Americana involuntarily wincing acknowledges this to be true. For it was shame that stilled my tongue, not lack of words. Yo soy Americana, such a difficult thing to say. Yo soy Americana, it catches in my throat and chokes me with its brutal truth. It rattles through my brain like a ricocheting bullet. For this was the first time in this life I would be forced to say yo soy Americana. For usually I get away with nació in South Carolina. But these women wanted to know the nation in which I was born and live without having yet embraced. Though I love the raw land and have adored many landscapes as wonderworks of beauty. I do not love my country. I have never waved its flag. And I think it important to say, to be La Americana is a terrible thing when you and your people are subject to the KKK disguised as the criminal justice system. Or working undercover as your boss or the emergency room doctor. For racism is as frequent a flyer as any blood-sucking bat. And the women both talking and listening are the targets of that fact. Along with their children and all of their cousins from other slaveholding lands. For what most divides us is the location of the plantation on which our ancestors were born. So I thought about this for twenty-one days before I discovered the only way I could say yo soy Americana was to write this poem.
All right, all right.
Yeah.
And I wanna uh, I wanna finish with a poem that I'm working on so y'all can help me out. It's called The Song The Caged Bird Sang. Or The Importance of Understanding the Import of Corporate Power. How many dead canaries do I have to show you before you believe that the mine is on fire? That there are poisonous gases looking in the shadows below? Will you wait until tendrils of smoke surround your head? Will your last thought be, I should have listened to what she said? Will denial form the foam on your private river sticks? Someone is picking the fruit of your labors to make the sauce in which to boil you along with your good name. Someone's trying to get close enough to have their way with you. Only thing their way is the status quo and the point is to keep you on the bottom. Don't you know it's dangerous to challenge diligently planted myths? That your whethels threaten the bottom line? And if you don't know yet, let me tell you now, your life is only a fraction of one line in an actuarial table with a broken leg. A single entry in a column labeled liabilities. Your expendability has been carefully planned within a fraction of an inch in the placement of a pickup truck's gasoline tank. Nevertheless, the impact of your resistance cannot be quantified unless you qualify your activities on the basis of hopelessness. Despair will make you statistically insignificant. A negligible quality which can safely be neglected. Defeat must exist in your mind before it can invade your reality. So tell your fears to have a seat and come take a walk with me. Park your anxieties while we walk down history's lane. I'll introduce you to great men and women and you'll inhale their indomitable spirits every time you speak their names. Let me give you a map on which known pitfalls are charted with the understanding that the cartography is incomplete. So bring a pencil with you. Be observant, alert, patient, ready and realistic. Ruled by a common goal, exercising compassion and humanity while exercising the demons of greed, sentimentality and ego. And those who follow you will find freedom. And I just wanna make an announcement. We have a show on Sturgis Radio. And we've been off the air as I put it, we got tapped by the FCC. And on this Wednesday, Carlos has some leaflets that you can get from him. On this Wednesday, we're gonna have a demonstration and a press conference. And then also has a show on Sturgis Radio. And she was there when the FCC came tapping. We have uh, we're gonna have a press conference on Wednesday at uh, Wall Street in Nassau by the Statue of George Washington. And we're gonna announce uh,
Take it for the good company. As soon as you say FCC, it got funky up in there. I'm big pro for the holy company.
We're gonna have a demonstration on noon on the fifteenth at Wall Street announced off by the Statue of George Washington. Where we announce the fact that we're going back on the air and that we're suing the FCC. So pick up the leaflet and if you can come out, please do. I'm so happy to be a plaintiff in this United States government instead of a defendant. Well, mine, y'all.
Paul, Paul to the people, y'all give it up. Since I, Shiba, in the house. Next we're gonna bring up one of our favorite satirical voices. Uh, British Racing, original, good friend of ours. Y'all ready for Pete, Pete Dolak's in the house.
Try that, there we go. Before I start, assuming I'll stop turning the thing off, there we go. I won't touch it, I'll keep my hands, there we go. Before I start, I've gotta do a commercial. Now, I, I, I know this kind of necessitates something of a change in, in, in what I do. But last summer I had taken a couple of months off from, from poetry and tried to assess my career as a poet. And, and the problem I came up with, I, I wasn't making enough money. That was the only reason I became a poet, was to make money. So I decided the solution to this was corporate sponsorship. So I have to now do a commercial. I'm very lucky, I got a major defense contractor to sponsor me. But they kind of follow me around and they get upset with me if I don't do this. So you'll be with me and then we'll go on with the regular material, okay? Come on down, we've got the best selection around, no defense contractor can beat Bombs R Us. Heat-seeking missiles, tanks, spy planes, we've got them all. Whether you're installing a puppet governor or eliminating enemies of the state, we're making deals like crazy. At Bombs R Us, customer satisfaction is guaranteed. Our weapons will kill more people than our competitors' weapons or double your money back. Don't forget our nineteen sixties nostalgia night next Friday when Napalm and Agent Orange will be fifty percent off. Dress like your favorite South Vietnamese dictator and we'll throw in a free pistol holder. And don't worry about your citizens finding out what you're up to because we've extended our two-for-one special and all shredders autographed by Oliver North. Bombs R Us, our killing is insane. Get upset with me if I don't do that, I have to go along. All right, let me do this. I've got mine, a Cadillac, a Ferrari and a Mercedes in the garage. A million dollar house on the mountain, guards at the neighborhood entrance to keep the riffraff away. Best of all, I don't have to make anything. I buy and sell paperwork. Only fools actually make anything these days. Had a great day today, ten thousand more were laid off. My stock went up three points, made a hundred thousand dollars. Last week, I had an entire division closed down. Bunch of fools running the place. The division made only five million last year. Should have made at least ten million dollars, I was thinking about selling it off. But the Wall Street analyst said it should have made at least eight million dollars and, well, you know, everyone reads those reports. And I knew I couldn't sell it for as much as I would have liked. So I saved myself the trouble, I had the whole thing closed down. A few whiners are complaining about the workers who lost their job. Hey, it's their own damn fault. I can't help it if they weren't smart enough to be a corporate raider like me. I really am sick of whiners. I just read the other day about some kid in third grade. They were playing the violins because the school lunch program is being eliminated and money for education is being cut again. Oh, boo hoo, little Johnny is gonna have to use an old textbook and sit in a classroom with forty or so other kids. I'm so sick of hearing about this crap. Those damn nine-year-olds always have their hands out. If they wanna eat lunch, they should go out and buy and sell companies just the way I do. Nobody handed me anything. By the time the estate was divided up between my brother and me and the damn government took out all those taxes, I had hardly more than nine, maybe ten million dollars to start out with. That kind of money doesn't go as far as you think it does, you know? I, I had to work hard to get to where I am. Like the time I beat Colbert and Crandace, full Maldemeter. I spent hours in that parked avenue restaurant holding the hands of those weak-kneed Maldemeter bastards. I didn't think we'd ever close a deal. Thought all that work was worth it just to see the look in Colbert's eye when he knew I get the deal. Then I spun off the Maldemeter's electronics and automotive divisions and made my entire investment back just like that. Of course, the companies that bought those divisions took on way too much debt and had to lay off a lot of workers to pay off their due debt. But that's the way it should be. And investors squats over these deals. Why sometimes I've had my lunch bowl cold on me, it's taken so long. And of course, my profits should come first. Who cares about a bunch of whining workers moaning about their jobs? They're in the way, it's their own damn fault. Of course, the only thing left of Maldemeter is the computer division. I don't know if that little bid is viable all by itself. In fact, and I know I probably shouldn't say this out loud. This Wall Street analyst I know tells me his company is gonna issue a report in two weeks saying Maldemeter's profits are projected to be off fifty percent. You know what that report is gonna do to the stock? It'll drop so fast, I'll get a neck cramp following it down. But I've got a way out. See, I've been talking to Twilliger, over Consolidated. Yeah, I know they're Maldemeter's computer division's big rival. But Consolidated wants to buy the assets. So I'm gonna sell Consolidated the entire division. Ever since Congress ran through that big corporate tax loophole, Consolidated has more cash than you know what to do with. So I know they'll pay top dollar for Maldemeter. Now I have to worry about Consolidated finding out about that report. I paid that analyst big bucks to leak his company's report to me and not tell anyone else about it. But I don't mind paying them, that was money well spent. I paid for good information and I know I'll make big money selling off Maldemeter. Consolidated paid plenty for the congressman who ran through that tax loophole for them. But they're getting Maldemeter's assets what they want. So we're both getting what we want, it's a win-win situation. Is this a great country or what? And I guess the only downside is that once Consolidated gets the plant workers to show them how to work the equipment, they'll all get laid off and people will start whining about more workers being out on the street. Hey, these are lean and mean times, the guys have to be able to Hey, these are lean and mean times, the guys have to be able to compete, you know? I can't tell you how sick I am hearing all this whining over unemployment. Look, they could have made me an offer for Amaldemater. I don't listen to something as low as two hundred million dollars, I'm not greedy. But they didn't make a single offer. Is that my fault? Then I have to read about how high the unemployment rate is. This writer was speculating about civil unrest. Hey, there are no problems in my neighborhood. If someone wants to start troubling their neighborhood, they better keep it there. But I don't have to worry. My neighborhood is on top of a mountain, miles from the city. The guards are on duty at the entrance twenty-four hours a day. I've got firm security and retainer. Everything's fine at my place, the hell with everyone else. I've got mine.
Pete Dolak in the house. Next poet. You know, one of the funniest things we had to deal with, sometimes we check out an artist through their art and we meet and we hope they're as cool as their art and sometimes we feel they be like, ah, get out of here. But this next artist I met through her art, it was in the first kitchen table press anthology about ten years ago. And she introduced me to another artist that I was looking for at the same time as Vincent, right? Vincent had this piece called Burn Back the Racist Attack. And it went with a poem that I wrote this year. And, you know, it was the first time we shared a platform, maybe we shared platforms two, few times. It's good to be able to share it again with a wonderful poet, a wonderful voice, a wonderful spirit. And I want y'all to give a wonderful welcome and that's for Sineen, y'all give it up for her.
You know, I didn't want to say this, but I have to. I was sitting here fretting and listening to what I was writing about. Am I gonna be good? Is it gonna work, you know? I mean, are they gonna like me, you know? And it's like, the ego is so intense. It's almost overwhelming. And then the purpose is lost, you know? And what I'm writing about is totally ignored. Because I was so busy being concerned about my image. And I just wanted to say that. Yeah, it's a reality, you know? Okay. Sometimes, you know, sometimes I feel a scream rising up inside of me. And sometimes I let it out. And then I feel safe. At least for that moment. That hour. That day. No more pain. How does your screaming affect your neighbors? Asked Susana Cabana as she threw her head back for life. I do it during the day, I hurry to say so I could sound like I have the right to scream out all the tears I have never dropped. All the shame I have always covered my face with. And lowered my eyes down to where I was taught my head belonged. With my head downward, the sadness drips down to my heart. The drops collect in each organ. Each muscle. So my uterus collects the most sadness, yet it's supposed to hold the seeds of humanity. And each time my uterus drops a seed. Humanity grabs it and beats its image into each tender vein. And for that I scream, oh! I am in pain. About how I treat myself and you and us and they. I am in pain. I screamed alone, you understand? I screamed to let go of all the things that are hurting me. I screamed to make room for myself inside of me. I screamed to remind myself and each one of us that we have the right to treat ourselves and each other with respect. I screamed to wake up the eternal energy of knowledge inside of us all. This scream has existed ever since the universe popped open to let out its orgasm of emotion from all those molecules rubbing up against each other. Remembering remembering the pain and pleasure of life that taught them that all that all is one. A few days after the forces of twenty-eight nations attacked Iraq, I was physically spun around in my apartment's hallway. I landed facing northeast. And though I was looking directly at the closet door and the wall next to it, I saw a woman. An older woman. About sixty. She had a cloth on her head. And her hands were raised up in front of her. She was pleading. All around her was devastation. The falling buildings raised clouds of smoke. The sky was gray. And in that vision was another woman telling us of what had happened to her during that war. Where's my child? My baby, where? Where's my baby? My baby, where's my baby? And as she screamed, a television anchor person could be heard saying, "The State Department informs us. U.S. casualties were very low." Where's my home? My house, where? 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 "The U.S. Armed Forces performed precise surgical strikes intended to destroy enemy strongholds," stated our president today. My family? Where's my family? My mother, my father, my my brothers, my sister? Where? Hundreds of thousands of U.S. families are rejoicing at this moment. Knowing their loved ones are alive and well. A spokesperson for the Armed Forces briefed the press pool in our nation's capital today. Where the hills, the fruit trees, the slopes that wound around the place I call home? There's no clean water. There's contamination. There's bodies rotting everywhere. We're afraid of an epidemic from our own loved ones. What can I eat? There's no safe place to sleep. Where can I go? What will become of me? The Kuwaitis are welcoming our troops with waving flags and open arms. As our men dodge the kisses of thankful Kuwaiti men. Shouts of joy are everywhere. The people of Kuwait are rejoicing over their liberation from the tyrannical Saddam Hussein. I'm lost. I I wanna go home. I wanna go home. I wanna go home. I wanna go home, I wanna go home. The U.S. Armed Forces and their force of engineers has estimated the cost of reconstructing Kuwait to be in the billions. This will mean profits for our corporations and work for the massive labor force displaced here as well as our homeless in the states and colonies. The United States Army One vindicated our nation's name after Vietnam. Set the record straight. Kicked ass. Liberated and oppressed people. And made Kuwait safe for our democracy. They do you understand that they won't even they won't even let me mourn? They won't even let me mourn my death? They won't even let me mourn my death? They won't even let me mourn my death? Tonight, all over America, we can hear "God bless America. Land that we love." Then the side. The last piece I'm going to do. The last piece. I read, I wrote it a long time ago, it seems, a real long time ago. But it seems like, you know, sometimes you do something, you say something, you create something and you don't realize the value of it, you know? And somebody else has to point it out to you, you know? So I want my soul back. Not hanging out of my body like a disinfected boomerang. I want my soul back. Filling my body with excitement instead of panting like a person trying to catch a last breath. I want my soul back. Emitting rays of eternal energy instead of shining like a seventeen-watt bulb in a window that's wet shot. I want my soul back. To accomplish what I was brought here to do. To paint, to write, to dance. All the steps of humanity. To sing ancient echoes and modern theories. To play music with my brain. I want my soul back. I know, I know, I know I've taken myself for granted. Giving others attention. And while they plug themselves into my soul's wisdom, I fill my shells with the knowledge of spiritually repressed, culturally discriminatory, psychologically disturbed, genetically atrophying empire. I was socialized to be repressed, demeaned and demoralized and promised that if I kept my place, I would be accepted. I am ready to unplug all the leeches, devices of distortion and misinformation. I am ready. I am ready to take my soul back. To take my soul back. To guide me.
Y'all feeling that? Y'all feeling that? Y'all give it up for Sineen.
Next part, we want her to make her way up here easy. All right? She just told me about something she dealt with. And we hope she dealt with it well and very carefully. Some of us had shadows, those... I got one of them too, so, all right, so I hope you talk about it. She ain't no stranger to this microphone, to this microphone. Y'all know Tiny Town. She live and living. But she'll be gone until her bones, even the one that hurt her back right now. Y'all give it up for Tiny Town.
I took a flight to stairs the other day, and I'm kinda paying for it now, so... I'm up here, and I'm out of here in a little bit, all right? So just kinda hang with me. Yeah. I'm gonna go way back to some stuff I did a long time ago, because it seems like the things that we were concerned with then, we are concerned with now. And it seems like it's not changing. It's, you know, it's like a little coverover. It's put a little bit of time, and we get real confident, and then boom, they pull the rug out for months. So if we're not careful, we're gonna go way, way back. This is a little bit about what I'm talking about. She said, "Use a wire coat hanger to get rid of it." Said everything would be all right for me if I just listened to the more fussing. Said it weren't fair for me to carry the seed of the devil's child. I can see y'all. Daddy found out about it. My sins could wash away, if we could forget it, like it ain't never happened. I was only about a month gone with the baby when she find out about it. Her raging and righteousness just about took everything from me. I wouldn't fight Mama no more. She weren't even real. It was like, like my spirit would stand outside of my body and watch what was going on around me, as though I had no real hand in the matter. There weren't no more truth or lie for me anywhere. There was only Mama, larger than life, looming and buzzing over things. It was though I surrendered over everything and just stood by and let her do what she want. It was safe that way. After all, didn't Mama know best about real life? Hadn't she always warned me that there weren't no real love hiding up, waiting for me to find it? I remember. I remember the flesh hanging from the bottom of my privates. Red, meaty, shiny. Blood dripping, forming ritual star patterns on the porcelain. The rims stopped spinning, rounding, rounding. Seems like, seems like I tried to catch a hold of the sides of the tub to anchor myself against the storm rising in my head, but I couldn't reach long enough or fast enough. And Mama, Mama was screaming something way off in the distance, something about, "Take her now, sweet Jesus." But blessed her fuss before she go, the buzzing in my head made it seem like a fantasy and that all these things was happening in somebody else's dream. And there was music. Sweet, deep, dark music. It was haunting, but I, I wasn't nowhere. Oh, hello. My name is Helen O. Oh, I know it might not mean much to you, but Eleanor Bumpers was my friend. Was it raining or clear that day? I don't know. What does it really matter? On October twenty-ninth, nineteen eighty-four, to Eleanor Bumpers, weather was of no consequence as she surrendered her life force reluctantly to a beast in tainted armor. Poor Grandma Bumpers. Arthritic pain weaved itself throughout her sixty-six-year-old bones and body till she couldn't feel the things she touched anymore. She used to sit sometimes with me and chat on the front porch. And like my bumpers, I suffered the same ailment. So most of the time, we spoke in pain about our pains and puffed on the chest of fields. And the cigarette's become a problem 'cause my bumpers would drop hers to the ground and wouldn't know. She done it to her daughter. I said, "My bumpers, you won't smoke that cigarette, huh? You gotta pick it up." Off the ground. My bumpers had a lot of hair. And she left the neighborhood kids coming for her 'cause she couldn't do it anymore. And when Eleanor would come back from the grocery store, she would drag her left leg behind her as fast as her ailment would allow. Oh, wasn't her pulling the full cart, though, no. Always someone else, and she couldn't carry things in her hands. And the cops come. They come to evict my bumpers from her home. Her apartment on University Avenue in the Bronx, you see? She owed the landlord ninety-six dollars and eighty-five cent back rent. And they come with gas masks, flat jackets, protective shields, iron pumps, and used-for-old shotguns. And they blew my bumpers into a blizzard. Cut her off. Took away God's gift, 'cause they said she was dangerous. Said she come out with a knife in her arthritic possession. Slow-footed, sixty-six-year-old, three hundred pounds, black, black Grandma Bumpers, killed by Koch Ward bureaucracy.
Please, stay.
And I guess now the world's supposed to be a better place for the efforts of those valiant cops in the rating committee who converged on such a menace to society. It took away my friend. And this is justice. And this is justice! Farewell, my bumpers. Farewell. In the spirit of Paul Robinson and Puerto Rico, I give you this offering, universal hostility. I don't want to talk about universal hostility. There's an unnatural distance between us. I say, I don't want to talk about universal hostility. There's an unnatural distance between us. My children are scattered. The sun no longer prys open their eyes in the home of their parents. I am not able to harvest first expressions as I had each day from their birth. Their precious heads no longer lay across my breast, comforting me more than I comforted them. I don't want to talk about universal hostility anymore. There's an unnatural distance between us. Turmoil has occurred within the soils of my home. A rupture that crossed continents on the winds of disaster. It swept concurrently about our heads, sucking us violently into its vortex. Nothing remains sacred. Lush lands turned to desert. The sun rose to parch where once it nourished. The seas carry treachery, brought it to my door. Devastation never known before. I say, I don't want to talk about universal hostility. There's an unnatural distance between us. I can't find you in my own home. Nothing remains familiar. Nothing surrounding protects. I weave and wail for balm to heal, but you are snatched away. My children cry, but I no longer hear them. Some were sent across the sea, some lost at sea. The others, their bones and blood and flesh construct many slaveholds in my home. The walls still scream their anguish. It is always the same. They are known in every land as slaves. Slaves in every harbor, every port of call. Slaves whose birthrights were perverted to render unwilling labor. Three-fifths the whole human, so much chattel for sale. Bitter man, bitter man, bitter man. Young girls, plump and lush in innocent puberty. Male strong and virile, good teeth too. Slaves who could not own their own bodies, much less the dirt they lay their heads on under oppressive sky. Slaves whipped and tortured more than mules till they themselves would not know the difference. Their mutilated genitalia summarily displayed for their masses, bestial and carnal pleasures. Because after all, these were not my children. They were less than human. Where and how does it end? At the mouth of a steel barrel filled with little messengers of death? I say, I don't want to talk about universal hostility anymore. I want to beat my drum. Summon the spirits of my ancestors. Want to bring down the skies in retribution. Pour libation to the gods of war. Commune with my totem. Scream war cries, chant a war dance. Let my enemies suffer greedily at my breast, the milk of death. I want to raise bullfrogs under your skin. Bury your menstrual panties in dirt and fish. Light a candle under the bed. Chant your name three times. Chant your name three times. Chant your name three times till the duffey draws your breath. I want to mouth the wind, read omens in old bones. Invade every one of your intimate nightmares. Summon every warrior from bushes, trees, and hovels. I want to bring my children back home. I say, I don't want to talk about universal hostility. I need to face my blue-eyed demons, their black-skinned cohorts, indulge in war, eye to eye. There must be no distances between us. And the enemy's eyes will tell me where my children can be found. I say, I don't want to talk anymore.
Yeah. Tiny Town in the house, y'all.